Hi, if we can, if we can get our audience back, please. Thank you. Are we back on? Good. So, I know one of the members of the public had a question for the police staff to see if there was any issues or comments about the enforcement of the proposed ordinance?
Yes, good evening, Madam Mayor and council members. Again, the goal of the ordinance is to change behavior and not to be heavy-handed in enforcement. I did reach out to some of the other chiefs in the county to inquire on their calls for service, and again, like Chandra had mentioned, they were very minimal. But how we would handle it is if the call came in to the police department, we hopes that with the county doing the education phase of it, that they would be contacting the county to try to seek some type of assistance and mediation with either their landlords or HOA or their actual neighbors that are smoking. So we would hope that that would be the first direction. If it did come to the police department, we would go and we would then have to mediate the situation. We would again, start with education, and then worst-case scenario, we would have to administer a citation. So you would have the education phase that we would begin with, and then ultimately, if it continued, then we would go to an administrative citation, which would start at $100 and then can double if it continued. We would not seek prosecution only because there's so many other elements to deal with. Due process comes in if we started seeking misdemeanor violations. So we would seriously start with the administrative citation and then go from there. But again, we would hope, we would start with education, and we would hope that many of these can be referred to the county for some type of mediation, either between the landlord and the tenant, or the tenant and their neighbors if they're a condominium or a townhouse situation.
Okay. Any other questions for the chief?
No.
Not for the chief, but I do have questions for staff as follow-up from the public comment.
Okay, great. You want to start?
Sure. So, this is for the deputy city attorney. So, there were some comments by Mr. Diaz and others about saying that there were some property rights and personal property rights, use rights, and constitutional rights at issue here, and according to the staff report, there's no constitutional right to smoke, and that's written into the ordinance. Can you talk about whether there are any other rights that are at issue?
It is correct. There is no constitutional right to smoke, and there are many types of regulations that apply to individuals that impact their ability to use property. The police powers of the city would allow the city to pass a smoking ban that would regulate what people can do on their own property. There is not legal limitation on your ability to pass that kind of an ordinance. And so while people do have property rights, this type of ordinance can be passed, which would limit certain activities that they can do on their property.
Okay, thank you. And then, can you talk also, Teresa, about the changes that were made by, as recommended by the subcommittee, about where people can smoke, where a landlord may designate people to smoke? Because one of the things in the council, at the subcommittee level, we did was we took that public comment about, you know, there really isn't enough place to go, we don't want people, the concern about people having to go out into the rain, or out to the public sidewalk up at the ridge specifically. And we asked the city attorney to come up with some language, and we approved it to enlarge that designated area. So if you could describe that, please.
Yes, of course. The first thing that we did was we changed the definition of enclosed. The ordinance has, the smoking ban has two sections. One is 8.45, which is the ban on smoking in the public places. And 8.46 deals with the multi-unit residences. Both of those separate chapters have definitions. The definition of enclosed was different in each of those. And so one of the things that we did was we made that definition internally consistent. And the effect of doing that is that a landlord would be able to, if the landlord chooses or the HOA chooses, to designate a smoking area in what is now an unenclosed space, but that could be a space that is covered. So previously, the ordinance defined in the context of a multi-unit residence, but not in the context of a public place, an enclosed space to mean anything even if it has a cover on top, as long as it has sort of a partial perimeter. So for example, if you had a carport, a carport would have been an enclosed space under the prior version of the ordinance. That is no longer the case. We have taken the more traditional definition of enclosed to really mean something that has a roof and walls and just openings for egress and windows and ventilation. We've taken that definition from the part of the ordinance that deals with the public spaces, and we're using that now in the multi-unit residence sense. So the result of doing that, as well as other amendments, is that a landlord or a homeowner association could choose to designate an outdoor area that is a covered space, as long as it's at least 30 feet from any doors, windows, or ventilation systems of an enclosed place on the property. So in the example up at the ridge, there are some parking areas that have outdoor carports. As long as the carport is at least 30 feet from the doors, windows, and ventilation systems, the homeowners' association could choose to designate a carport, which would allow smokers, at least a covered place to go to smoke outdoors.
Thank you. And the other question I had for you was, it wasn't brought up at this meeting, but at the last meeting, people had issues, or actually, this council member, Lenz, had asked about the signage requirements. And if you could talk about how the subcommittee recommended lowering the burden on landlords, or, you know, to decrease the requirement for signage in this version of the ordinance?
Absolutely. In the version in front of you, the signage requirements for multi-unit residences have been reduced. Under the prior version, the ordinance would have required a sign on the exterior of any multi-unit residence saying, "This is a no-smoking facility," or a "no-smoking" sign. Now, that is no longer the case unless the particular building has six units or more inside of it. So a duplex wouldn't require a sign on the exterior. Certainly, if the property owner chooses to put one, they have that right, but it's no longer required. So as far as no-smoking signs at a multi-unit residence, the only places they are now required under the version in front of the council is on the outside of each enclosed building, but only if the building contains six individual units or more, at all enclosed common areas, and at all unenclosed common areas that facilitate physical activity, which would be, you know, playgrounds and swimming pools. And of course, if there is a designated smoking area, then there would also need to be a sign at the designated smoking area to make it clear that that was a designated smoking area.
On the, to follow up on that, is there a limit on the size or the amount of area a smoking area could be designated? Could, say, the homeowners' association make all carports and all parking areas over 30 feet from a building, smoking areas?
As long as they were 30 feet away, and as long as they were, they met the criteria for a designated smoking area. So it has to be unenclosed, it has to be at least 30 feet away from the doors and ventilation systems. But there is no limitation on the number or the size of the units. It just needs to be a certain distance from things.
So the homeowners' associate, and I'm just picking on them.
Sure.
Homeowners' Association could designate all parking lots and all carports as smoking areas?
If the parking lot is an outdoor parking lot that is unenclosed, they could designate a parking lot and a carport. Again, as long as it satisfies the requirement that it be a certain distance away from doors and ventilation systems. It also needs to be a certain distance away, again, from pools or other areas that facilitate exercise. So if you have an underground parking lot, I know that there are, some of the properties up at the ridge, for example, have an underground enclosed parking area. Those areas could not be designated, but the parking area that is essentially on the roof of that could be.
Thank you. Did you have any other questions for staff?
Yeah, if I start out, certainly, there's been a lot of passion on those that support it, don't support it, on both sides. I don't think I've seen anything recently in Brisbane that, you know, just really stimulated a lot of differences of opinion. But there is one common thing, a theme, I think, that everybody agrees on, that cigarette smoke and secondary smoke is harmful. And I don't think there's no disagreement on that anywhere. Where the disagreement is, is, I think, in the most part, is vaping, medical marijuana, and how do we enact an ordinance like this? I know we've been crafting it. Certainly, the subcommittee has worked on this quite a bit. Made a lot of changes, good stuff. I think we're kind of getting there. But I'll make the statement, the ordinance as written right now, I cannot support. So I have to ask, Ray and Lori, I know you support it because you're the subcommittee, so I'm leaving you out of this question. I'm going to ask this question directly to both Cliff and Terry. If either of you support this ordinance as it's written, let's vote on it and get out of here. If you don't, then I'll discuss what my thoughts are on it. Okay?
I think you need to discuss your thoughts, Mark.
So you don't?
No, no, I mean, I like a lot of what's in this ordinance, but there's some things that I think should be altered a bit.
Okay.
So, since you have a four, I'll let you do your thing, and then after you're finished, then there's some things that I'd like to bring up as well.
Okay.
Well, one other method that we could use is something that the staff has recommended that we go through item one through eight and do a straw poll on those items if we're happy with them in theory or in substance, and then be able to narrow down where our differences may or may not be. But if you'd rather do it the other way, we can do it that way, too.
I still have some questions for staff.
Okay.
And for the subcommittee.
Okay. So then we should get the questions out first before we could have our, should have our discussion. So perhaps you should go first.
You got questions? Okay. So, you know, so the, so 8.45.040, the areas where smoking is prohibited. So, and just comparing with the counties.
What page, John?
This is page 13 of our ordinance, and then.
The redline version?
Yes, and then page three of the staff report, item B under San Mateo County. So the second bullet, under the San Mateo County ordinance, and I know it's just more of a brief description, says within 30 feet from enclosed county-owned structures, right, smoking is prohibited. So then in our ordinance, under item A, you know, it talks about the 30 feet, but then it also has.
What page is that on?
Page 13.
13.
13, thank you.
So it also has, except areas that are fewer than 30 feet from the enclosed structure that lie within a public roadway or a public sidewalk that is contiguous to public roadway. So I'm curious to know why we included that additional verbiage that, and maybe it's in the county ordinance, but it's just kind of cut here.
So it actually did come from the county ordinance. And the purpose of that is to make sure that it creates a, just like the county does, it creates a 30-foot bubble around the entire building, which is different than in the multi-unit resident issue where you're only 30 feet from doors and windows and ventilation systems. So this is a 30-foot bubble around the building. And if you use City Hall as an example, 30 feet all the way around. However, 30 feet would get you into the middle of the street. So if you have a situation like that, that 30-foot bubble is cut off so that smoking is still permitted in the street, which would mean if someone has their car parked on the side of the street and is smoking in their car, they are allowed to do that. If someone, and we've added language that is not in the counties, to also say the public sidewalk is gets, it gets, that 30-foot bubble will get cut off before the public sidewalk. So if someone is walking by City Hall on the public sidewalk that's adjacent to the street, they are permitted to smoke even though they are within 30 feet of City Hall.
Yeah, okay, and that is the same with county structures?
It's exactly the same as the county, except if you look on page 13, you'll see there, in this last iteration, we've added a little bit of language at the end, or a public sidewalk that is contiguous to a public roadway. And that is to make sure that it's very clear that you can smoke on that public sidewalk as well as in the street. Again, we don't, obviously, we don't want smokers to go stand in the middle of the street to smoke.
So using City Hall as the example, so if someone wanted to stop and smoke on the sidewalk in front of City Hall, that's okay with this ordinance?
That would be okay with this ordinance. It would not be okay for them to then come up the stairway and walk around the sidewalk that goes around to the back of City Hall. Then you're within the 30 feet, it's not a sidewalk that is essentially adjacent to the public.
And so then, you know, moving on to a different location, so say we're in front of the community center library, and someone is on the sidewalk in front of the building, they can smoke all they want in front of the building?
They can smoke, there is a 20-foot, under state law, there's a 20-foot from the doors, from the doors. I actually am not, Chandra, does the 20-foot allow, and is there a bubble then at the end of? Okay. So there, I mean, there is a state law 20-foot requirement from doors, from places of employment. And so I would need to look to see whether that state law would preclude smoking on the sidewalk if you're within 20 feet. But that would be the case now, and this ordinance doesn't impact that.
Okay, all right. And so perhaps then, if you're smoking out in front of City Hall, that state law might apply if it was.
Within 20 feet?
Or maybe it's more than 20 feet.
I'm not sure, I'm not sure that the 20 feet extends beyond, I'm not sure that, whether that 20-foot would extend beyond.
All right.
But this ordinance wouldn't, wouldn't change that.
And so, you know, I saw some emails a couple of months ago regarding a mother who was smoking, taking her kid to school, it was kind of a big deal, you know, on Facebook. But I know that we don't have schools as part of this. You know, the, I guess, are there, I guess, are there some schools in unincorporated San Mateo County?
So in those instances, the state board of education would require that all campuses be smoke-free. They're not necessarily tobacco-free, so those are things that individual schools are due, but state law means that all campuses for schools must be smoke-free.
So then, you know, there wouldn't be anything that would prohibit us to, say, structures owned by the city or school district? You know, because what we're trying to do is designate particular areas.
So can you tell me?
So in, I have a number A, it's just enclosed structure owned by the city or a school district, and then works up to the edge of city property or school district property.
So are you suggesting that we would then be saying that, making it essentially unlawful to smoke on school district property? Is that what you?
No, not on the property, it's the sidewalk, you know, the area, the area around it, you know, you're talking about that bubble. I mean, once you leave the school ground, you're on the sidewalk, you're basically on, well, you're on city property.
It would be within the discretion of the council to adopt an ordinance that says if you are on the public side, the city-owned public sidewalk, and you are X number of feet away from school district property or doors and windows of a school district building, however you want to do it, you could adopt an ordinance that would preclude smoking within a certain distance of school district property when you're on a public sidewalk.
Okay.
This ordinance does not do that. We would be, we would need to add.
Is that something that the subcommittee had talked about?
We did not, but I did receive an email from Karen Lenz, who's on the school board, saying that she was pleased to see that we were looking into this, you know, this ordinance, and that the school board was also going to be considering smoking issues. So I don't know where they are in those discussions. It's not to say we can't regulate it, but, you know, I think, you know, there is some movement, at least from the school district, to regulate smoking around their schools.
Yes, but then, so I could see where they would regulate on campuses, but outside the campus where then the sidewalk is the city's property.
Yeah.
I wonder how that, then, that.
That would come back to the city, then, to regulate that. So that could either be done by way of amendment to this ordinance, or if the school district adopts a policy, you could then come back and later amend.
Amend.
Assuming there was an ordinance on the books at that point, you could then amend at that point. Or you could add a provision now that says that you can't smoke on a public sidewalk X number of feet from whatever it is that you're wanting it to be from, the doors, the windows, the school district property at all. You could do that if you want. You know, if someone's walking down the public sidewalk, it may be difficult to determine at what point you hit that spot where you can't. But that is something that you could do, and you could either work with the school to determine what it is they think is appropriate and come back, or you could add something like that at this point.
You know, I think it would probably be better to work with the two-by-two.
Right, that's what I was thinking.
You know, then, you know, there are some areas that in item C, that the subcommittee had asked to be included in being prohibited, such as the walkways in some of these, like the dog park, you know, Parker Park Trail. You know, so areas, say, like the dog park or the Mission Blue Field, perhaps the Mission Blue Tennis Courts. Did you ever talk about having a designated smoking area around these areas, rather than just prohibiting smoking at these locations?
No, what we talked about was the common theme that these are all recreational facilities. And so the intent was, you know, where there's people, you know, doing sports, that we wanted to encourage no-smoking zones. So we didn't talk about having designated smoking areas, but that's not to say that people can't go onto the public sidewalk near any of these locations to smoke.
That's true. Okay, that's right. There are sidewalks that are nearby. Okay. I think the items I have are more of discussion items amongst ourselves rather than questions.
Any other questions for staff?
I have one question.
Okay.
I think this is probably to Chandra, and that has to do with the studies done by the environmental scientist, I believe he's at Stanford, that I believe your diagram is based on the permeation of smoke throughout multiple unit buildings. When those studies were conducted, did any of them have, I do remember it said in there that it didn't make any difference, the vintage of the building, even new buildings had the same problem, it was just a matter of the percentage of permeation. But I don't recall anything about any kind of, you know, fire smoke barrier situation that Mr. Diaz is talking about and then Mr. Vierios responded to. So what about that, your question, because the issue is, you know, if it really can be sealed, you know, then isn't that different than the permeation issue, which is leading to the concern over secondhand smoke going to your neighbor?
So I don't recall if Dr. Clappas's research looked at those types of situations, so I'd have to go back and even I could ask him very specifically. But when he assessed the buildings, he looked at buildings in San Mateo County, and Santa Barbara County, and LA County. He looked at high-rises, he looked at small duplexes, he looked at old buildings, new buildings, and his data was the same across the board.
Right.
But I can look in his research and ask him if he looked at, if there were firewalls in any of those buildings.
Yeah, my presumption was, but I don't know for sure, that's why I'm asking, that that sort of determines the proportion of permeation. Because there was a variation between 30 and 60 percent of different kinds of building structures, but I think the minimum was 30. So I'm guessing that those were the buildings that were the most, quote, "sealed," unquote, but I don't know for sure.
Yeah, so I can definitely ask him that question.
Yeah, okay. That was an interesting point that I think we need to have clarified.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I do have one last question that Madam Mayor, if I may. I was about to ask.
Of course.
So on page 14 of the ordinance, on the top continued paragraph, and this is something that I had brought up at the last meeting in regards to this. So where the second line, "Shall be conspicuously posted in every room in a building or other place where smoking is regulated by this chapter." So, yeah, so that just seemed like kind of a bit of overkill, so, and I think we talked about perhaps posting it in the entryway of buildings where smoking is regulated by this chapter.
So this particular provision is in 8.45, and that is the chapter that deals with smoking in businesses patronized by the public and public places. This is not the provision that applies to multi-unit residents?
That is correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
So the, this came directly from the county's ordinance, and the intent of this is that it would be posted in either the room or the building, or whatever the other place is as appropriate. So if you had it on the front of the building, or in the entryway of the building, then you would be covered for the whole building. But if it was a situation where it only applied to a particular room or area of the building, because, for example, that was a business where people patronized, and the rest of the building wasn't a business where members of the public patronized, then you would just put it in that space. So the intent of this, as I read it, is it's sort of flexible, that you're putting it where it is appropriate, whether that be the room, the building, the door. You know, we could certainly clarify that a bit if you would like.
You know, I mean, I think.
But I think that's the intent, and I think that's probably how the police department would enforce it.
Okay, yeah, I'm fine. Okay, yeah, I'm fine with that. All right, now I'm done with my questions, Madam.
So in, to follow up on that, in what place would a building be not public? That smoking would not be not allowed?
So if it, if it were a private club, a, a private club, so if you have, I don't, I don't know if you have any of these in Brisbane, but if you had a private club, it's not, it's not being patronized by members of the public, it's a private club, it's not a residence, it's not a multi-unit resident, we're not in that part, then it, it wouldn't fall within the definition, it wouldn't fall within the prohibition. This prohibition deals with businesses patronized by the public, enclosed areas that are businesses patronized by the public, and passageways between such businesses where the, the public is using those passageways, and those passageways are also enclosed. It doesn't, wouldn't apply to a private club.
So let's say the Eagles Club here in town does not have to be smoke-free.
If there are employees there, it might have to under state law, but that has nothing to do with this ordinance. Assuming that state law isn't requiring them to be smoke-free, this law would not require it if it's a private club. Now, if it is a place where anyone can just walk in and patronize, more of a bar situation or a restaurant situation, then yes, it would fall under this ordinance.
Okay. I was just wondering where it, it wouldn't apply, so.
Okay. Thank you.
That was, okay.
Yeah, so, I'm ready for discussion.
Okay.
Clark, you wanted to continue?
Well, I certainly can, but I can get into the why's and not.
Well, do you want to start, do we, do you want to start with perhaps this list and see if there's things that we can agree on?
I'd kind of, I'd kind of like to shoot past that a little-
Okay.
Yeah. Then we can kind of come back to that.
Good.
What list are you talking about? Is there something we have?
Yes, it is. It's page two of the staff report on the items that this ban would-
One through eight. That's the one through eight, okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Good.
Chief Leese has stated earlier that the goal is to change behavior through education, and Shonda's been saying that the whole time too, about educating people. And really, to me, to educate people is, is doing an outreach to them, to educate, and passing ordinance, and then waiting for complaint-by-complaint basis to do the education to me doesn't seem like it would even really be effective, because I'm still not even sure of the mechanics of how that works. You, you know what I mean? It's like, how's that going to work? Somebody saying something about people in Brisbane calling, you know, because they didn't like their neighbor or something like that, you know? I know for a fact there are some very mean-spirited people in this city. It's a small city, and they will do mean-spirited things, and they've used city ordinances, and staff knows this, on a constant basis to harass their neighbors with and anybody else that they feel like they can. And this ordinance is really kind of one of those that's going to set that situation up. But having said that, I think, I think it is a good ordinance to have, but I don't think we're there yet. So from the education standpoint, is this is what my suggestion is, is with Viewpoint and Altamore, is we table this for six months. Our subcommittee, which Ray, you're no longer going to be on as of next week, but Lori, you will be, along with the county and maybe a staff member, have a minimum of two effective meetings with both Viewpoint and Altamore. What I call effective is there's truly an outreach there on this is what the city is intending to do with this ordinance, right? And I'm saying on a six-month period. And additionally, reach out to all the apartment owners and have meetings with them, not, not necessarily the tenants, but the apartment owners, and let them know how this is going to work, how this is going to function within their units, and, and maybe give them some suggestions on how they can educate their tenants, okay? If we do that, if we do that, and we show true due diligence, then on page twenty-one, under section eight point four-six point oh-four-oh, item B, it says, "Beginning twelve months after the effective date of this ordinance, smoking is prohibited and no person shall smoke in any existing unit or common area of multi-unit residence except in a designated smoking area as provided herein." I would suggest pulling that in six months. In other words, instead of saying twelve months there, you say six months. Because if we adopted this ordinance tonight, it's not going to be in effect until twelve months from now. Is that correct?
It's partially correct. The ordinance takes effect, there's one piece of the ordinance that is delayed. The rest of the ordinance takes effect thirty days after adoption, just like any other ordinance. Piece that's delayed is only part of the multi-unit resident smoking ban, and it's the ban on smoking in multi-unit residents that, that, that apply to existing common areas and existing units. So any new units or new common areas, the ban takes, the ban takes place immediately thirty days after the ordinance takes effect. I'm sorry, thirty days after the ordinance is adopted.
Define new.
So new is, new is defined. A new unit is a unit that has issued a certificate of occupancy more than a hundred and eighty days after the effective date of the ordinance. It also means a unit that is let for residential use for the first time more than a hundred and eighty, eighty days after the effective date of the ordinance.
And, and I'm not sure we have anything that would really apply Brisbane right now, that any new buildings that are being built that would apply to that. So in effect, if we put six months there, then a year from now, then it would take effect on multi-unit buildings.
If you, if you don't, if you pass this ordinance six months from now, it would then take effect seven months from now, except for the piece that you're delaying, and if you're delaying that an extra six months, it would be thirteen months then.
Yeah, okay. Total.
Total.
And if we pass it tonight, it would be twelve months?
Unless you change it.
Well, it'd be, okay, so we can, we can massage this any way we want, the, the time.
We can, you can massage the time. You can make it longer and do your education piece. If you know what you want to pass now, and your concern is about education, you can instruct staff, however, I think the county is planning to do a, a big marketing piece on this. I think the county can speak to what they're going to do.
Here's where I'm at on it. I'm not willing to pass it now until we do the education. So, you know, because I know how that works sometimes, and sometimes that just doesn't happen. And so, you know, I want to put the fire under it to make sure that it happens, and then I'd be willing to support it. And I don't know how my colleagues feel about that, but I would certainly be open for feedback for this mechanical piece that I'm suggesting, because-
So, Clark, so the ordinance is split up into these two chapters, two sections. And there's the eight point four-five, which is business, and then there's the eight point four-six, which is the residential. Would you be okay with eight point four-five moving forward and eight point four-six having the-
No, I think we should move, move the whole thing as, as a unit. You know, and go from there, but it would still go in effect, massage the time where it would still go in effect at the same time.
At the same time.
At the same time, it's just to do the educational outreach beforehand. And, and I'm not getting into the details about vaping and medical marijuana yet, but
Yeah, just an, alright.
Talking specifically of, of, of the smoke, so.
But, but that would be, the timing would be different though. Because if we just introduced the, the, you know, the public place part, that goes into effect after the ordinance goes into effect. There's no delay on that. The delay is with the multi-unit housing.
Yeah.
So if you don't do the public part of it soon, then that gets delayed, whereas otherwise it would go into effect.
Okay.
Am I correct about that?
That's correct. It would go into effect thirty days after adoption.
Right.
Okay. After a second reading?
Yes, the, the adoption on the second reading.
Okay, we could discuss that part, but, so, I guess.
Yeah, I'm coming, you know, I, I think it's important for you to, to approve this. And, you know, I want to be, you know, I want to be sensitive to, to what you're saying. And so I know that you don't want to be excluded from, from passing this, and I think you've put forth a, a proposal that provides some balance and still gets us to that end date at the same time. So, but I'm also glad that you're now willing to maybe entertain perhaps splitting it up and having the public space part of the ordinance, eight point four-five, maybe go forward in the eight point four-six, having that be delayed. At least that's what you kind of alluded to just in that exchange with Ray.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
You know, if I may respond to Clark, I think that, you know, I, I'm, I understand you want to do more education and outreach, and I'm concerned that, that may just drag out the process even longer, and I'm not sure what more outreach can be done. We've already, you know, noticed many meetings and have sent more notices than required for this type of ordinance. We've, we've already specifically notified the HOAs through their managers. We've posted this meeting specially on our website and, and, you know, done all this special noticing. So, you know, and the public has come out, and we've tried to take their, their concerns and address them through the subcommittee. So I feel strongly that we should try to move forward tonight with something that we can feel comfortable with. And, you know, if, if the ordinance as written doesn't, isn't something you can support, then I'd like to know what specific parts of it you can remove and still approve.
I think I was pretty clear about that, the timing, Lori, the outreach to me was not effective. And the effectiveness is you go to the HOA, you specifically the subcommittee with the county, and you go to two HOA meetings at least, the minimum, where they have them collectively come in, the people come in, you talk to them, you tell them this is what it's going to be, this is how the ordinance is going to work, and-
I can tell you I-
Sending the notices, how many notices do people get and they just ignore, you know?
Yes, but I've been, I've been to those HOA meetings, I was on the board of our HOA, and I can tell you they're very, the attendance is very low. And so the, the way to reach the, the public, you know, the residents at those, of those units, may not be best served by going to the HOAs. You know, I think people are more likely to, to read the notices and be aware of this through, you know, all the means that we've done already. I don't think they necessarily will look at their, you know, agendas from their HOAs.
I, I hear what you're saying, but I'm not going to support it otherwise, you know, that's, that's where I'm at. So, you know, I just think that that really needs to happen, and, you know, how my colleagues feels one way, you know, if this is this way, and then, okay, you know? So I'm, I'm hearing you, but I have heard you through the ordinance, and I'm not there, and I'm not going to be there unless this does happen. So, you know, I'm saying a lot more work really needs to be done. That educational outreach is really true, if this is what this is really about, then hit the pavement with them. That, that's what I'm saying, you know, to really do it. It's about-
Then we'll be number twenty out of twenty.
Ray, I know, but you have done that when you were mayor. You go to HOA meetings, you go up there and you communicate directly with people, you know, you tell them what's going to go on. I mean, it's like, you know, the folks that, you know, have read the notices, you know, showed up here, you know? But a lot of people don't. And then it's always the, well, I never heard about it. I mean, you're still going to get that, but I'd still like to see the due diligence, if this truly is, the goal is about changing behavior through education, then that's what I want to see. I don't want to say, oh, let's throw an ordinance out here and then, you know, we'll educate them on a complaint basis. I, I'm not buying that. I'm just not. I'm not convinced that that's the way to do it. So I'm trying to come up with an alternative that I think would be more effective on a truly an outreach and to folks. And from there, then I would say, okay, let's pull it in, I'll support it. So.
Okay, well, I, I understand your position. I'd like to hear from Councilmember Lentz about, you know, what you would like to see changed or what you find acceptable in the ordinance as written.
Okay, sure. So let's, let's go on page thirteen, item C of section eight point four-five point zero four-zero. So that's the section of the items for the locations that are prohibited. And so if we're allowing people to smoke on the sidewalk, to be consistent, they should also then be allowed to smoke on the walkways, as well as the Old Corey Park, or Old Corey Road Park and the Crocker Park Trail. Now, you know, I, I spend, you know, a significant amount of time on those trails running. I haven't seen anyone smoke on those things, so I mean, chances are they're not going to smoke, you know, and maybe you catch that, or have that occasional person smoke. So I, I would exclude those from your, your list.
Which ones would you exclude?
So Upper Bicentennial Walkway, Lower Bicentennial Walkway, Mono and Klamath Walkway, Old Corey Road Park and the Crocker Park Trail, as well as the Moreno on the Bay Trail Pathway along the shoreline at the adjoining picnic and recreational areas. I would also, item number D, says at any city-owned public parking area at any of the beaches, parks, trails and sports fields. Out at Sur Point, and I, I would, I would get rid of that altogether. Item number F, it says at all public transit stops, I would redefine that and say within public transit structures, so that someone can smoke outside the structure, and that should be okay. And then, let's see, under the eight point four-six, I'd like to add an exemption. So, and we've talked about the, you know, the multi-unit building, if they're all okay with smoking, you know, then I, I think they should have the ability to, to be able to opt out. And so I, I've written some language that says if all, if all residents of a multi-unit building choose to smoke, they may apply to the city manager or the city managers designate for an exemption to chapter eight point four-six. they may apply to the city manager or the city manager's designee for an exemption to chapter eight point four six. Then I would add some additional language.
Can you say that one again, Clark? Where, where, where are you at?
Okay, I'm sorry. So, um, this would be a new item, it would be eight point four six point one zero zero. So, uh, if residents of a multi-unit building choose to smoke, they may apply to the city manager or the city manager's designee for an exemption, an exemption to chapter eight point four six.
How, how about, and I, I get what you're saying, but I don't think that if all residents choose to smoke, I think it's all residents choose to allow smoking. They wouldn't all have to smoke.
So then what happens?
If they use that wording, you'd probably say if they choose to allow, so they could opt out if it's a, I, I think what you're trying to get at is they could opt out if it's an agreement between the group.
Yes, what I'm trying to get at is that I don't want folks that are in a multi-unit building, they all are okay with smoking and those smokers feel like they're breaking the law. I, I don't want that to be on them. However, um, if, if there's any tenant that chooses to opt out of that exemption, then the building inhabitants would be required to conform to all the requirements of chapter eight point four six. So, if, if there was someone who was part of that building and they decided to quit, then that building then would have to conform. And that, um, again, I'm throwing out some language here and it's up to us if we want to, to go with it. Uh, conformity will be required within the sixty days of a written opt-out letter submitted to the city manager or the city manager's designee. Chances of this even happening is probably really remote, right? But again, it just, if, if a group of people who are living in the multi-unit building want to smoke, they have that right. But if someone in that group decides to quit, then that building then has to conform to the, the regulation.
Okay. Just to respond on that item, I see a, I, I see what you're trying to accomplish, but a couple of issues that I see are, um, well, that, that lawsuit saying that, you know, the, that the landlord could, or the HOA could still be liable for nuisance even if they're allowed to opt out under our ordinance. So there's still, like, if somebody moves in or they decide they had a baby and they don't want, want to have smoking anymore permitted or grandchildren come to visit or whatever, for whatever reason, you know, they, they change their mind, there, there's still potential liability. So I see it problematic for a landlord or an HOA to want to agree to that. Um, and having a smoke-free versus a smoking-allowed building, um, sounds, it, you know, in theory, it, it sounds more in theory like it can work, but in, in practicality, you know, the insurance rates are going to be higher because of fire damage, um, with smoking buildings. Um, and there, you know, who decides what is a resident, you know, does that mean the children don't get a voice? They don't get a vote until they turn eighteen, you know, who, who is it that gets to decide? Because by designating it a smoking building, it's, it's even worse for like the children in that building who are, um, you know, really at the whim of the, the adults who are making these decisions for them.
These would be their parents.
Right.
So, um.
So I, I just, I see it a little bit hard and what happens if somebody moves in? Um, and they would be very much pressured to go along with this and feel very fearful of speaking up and, you know, you know, being, you know, fearful of retaliation, retaliation by the other tenants if they voiced objection and wanted the apartment designated as a, you know, as subject to the ordinance. It's kind of like a whistleblower problem. So I, I don't see it working.
Which is, well, you know, I, I think if, uh, you know, so, so I am some rental property. In, in the lease agreement, I don't allow my tenants to smoke. In, in most of the standard, uh, lease agreements that are out there, they don't want their tenants to smoke for those reasons, you know? Yeah, having those risks of, of fire and, uh, smoke that then permeates into the walls and then it smells and then you have to then paint, you know, to get out the smell hopefully. But I think if there's a, a group of smokers that are in a building and they want to smoke, I think we should allow that. Um, if someone's moves out or decides to quit, I mean, and there's that pressure, I mean, you know, I, I don't, I don't see that being the reason why you don't then do it. I think if you decide to quit and you know all the other smokers are there, there is that right to be able to, um, submit the letter, but chances are you'd probably leave.
And go where in this rental market?
I, you know, I, I think we need to have someplace for them. And so that, and that, I'm, I'm putting that out there as, um, an item for being, you know, having an exemption to the multi-unit, uh, buildings.
So, so current law allows a apartment owner or a rental unit owner to make that decision for themselves. They are not forced to allow smokers in their building. It's a little different for, let's say, a condo owner who, they can be a no-smoking condo. They can make that decision with the HOA. And when you purchase a, a building, you're going to know that this is a smoke-free building if that's how it was purchased. To come in, for me, I've talked to people up at the ridge and they haven't had, at least in the condos, haven't had issues with anyone complaining about the smoking. They would rather not have them smoke on the deck because that is more intrusive um, than smoking in the units. Um, and so, for me, it, it's the bigger idea of it being a landlord's choice to a certain degree, or a homeowners association's choice, I think, is sticking with the, the idea that it's the people who choose to live there and if they think it's a benefit to live in a smoke-free, um, condo, they're making that choice to purchase in a smoke-free condo versus where they've made a choice to purchase knowing that it may be allowed and they may have a neighbor who does it or doesn't or, you know? So I think that while I like the idea of you having it where a group of people can opt out, the logistics of, okay, we're going to opt out until somebody else moves in and then we're all going to have to opt in within thirty or sixty days. Um, but again, it, it, it's a difficult way to try to get a balance. But currently landlords can make that decision if they're a smoke-free building or not.
Well, here's, you know, the baseline position for me though, in, in these multi-unit buildings. And, and that is that no one should infringe on the health and happiness of someone else. And I think the cigarette smoke does that. So, you know, and so I, I'm in favor of, of moving forward with the ordinance as it relates to smoking and, and I'll be honest with you, uh, coming into the meeting, I, I, I had put vaping, you know, in the exempt column. But through testimony tonight and just getting more information, you know, not having a good understanding of, of, well, understanding that it is extremely difficult to regulate the e-cigarettes because there's so many different types of concoctions that can go into these things. It'd be extremely difficult to, to choose what is a safe one and what is an unsafe one. And so, um, I'm in favor of moving forward with smoking and the vaping, not with, uh, the medical marijuana. You had made a, made a good point before I'm Adam Mayor regarding, uh, you know, how often someone would smoke, uh, a joint uh, for their medical, um, uses and it would be, it's the amount of smoke generated by a joint or two. Even though we've heard information saying that all smoke is bad, we, well, it, it's about the amount of exposure that makes it harmful. Our bodies are resilient enough to, to overcome certain, a small amount. Um, but I think that part I would leave exempt, but I would include the vaping and the cigarette smoking. So, you know, trying to provide something here where, you know, someone who, people that want to smoke and they all want to smoke, so they can smoke and have it not be against the law. And, you know, so that, that, that's what I'm proposing.
Yeah, I agree with you on the, on the vaping. I certainly was, uh, convinced tonight, the new information, I, I, I think, and everything actually that I've, you know, I've been reading everything that we've gotten and, uh, I think, uh, I think we need to include the vaping in it. But I'm not convinced early about the medical marijuana and, and so, you know, I'd rather leave the exemption on that to kind of, you know, mirror what the county's doing right now. If the county decides otherwise, then we can always come back and amend it, you know, have more information on it, so.
Well, the medical marijuana, the marijuana use period, medical or recreational, I think that there's a lot of, of regulation that's going to be coming down because California is leaning towards making it legal. And I think that there's going to be more coming from the state as far as what those regulations are going to be. So, do you want to go down the items on one through eight on what we could support as an ordinance now? In theory, and it may be sent back to subcommittee to try to craft something. And then leave out what we may not be interested in doing. So that we can get a happy medium or a satisfactory medium if that comes down to it. Um, I think we can all agree that smoking's not good for us and, and it's not good to be. And especially if you don't want to smell it or have the effects. Um, but I think we, when it comes to housing, we have different ideas on how we can implement that. So, I'd suggest going through the list and see where we stand on these items. Just, and then we can come back and talk about them some more.
Yeah, I'm, I'm fine with that.
So, on item one, which is to ban smoking of traditional tobacco products and other products in certain public places and businesses patronized by the public. I can agree with that.
Yes.
Yes.
I think everybody.
So, we're good with that one. And then to ban the use of e-cigarettes and vaporizing in other, of other substances in certain public places and businesses patronized by the public. And so that's, um, still banning it the same as tobacco. E-cigarettes and vaporizing. So, if it's inappropriate to smoke a cigarette in a place, it's inappropriate or illegal to smoke, um, an e-cigarette or a vaping device. And I think, again, within the context of what we've got, that seems very appropriate.
Uniform.
What do we?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah.
I think this number three is harder, the banning smoking in common areas and individual units of multi-unit residences.
Skip that one for right now.
Okay. Um, so we have, we'll come back to that one.
Yeah, if that's the, you know, I mean.
I'm just trying to get the consensus on what we can get consensus on to start.
Okay.
We can come back as we go down the list. I think banning the use of e-cigarettes and vaporizing of other substances in common areas and individual units of multi-unit residences, that goes along with three. Apply to the smoking of marijuana and does not contain an exemption for the smoking of medical marijuana in an individual unit or multiple unit residence. And I am not able to go with that.
Yeah, I think we're all, I think the majority of the council is for having the exemption for medical marijuana, of smoking it.
Okay. So, am I?
No, I'm, yeah, I'm not supporting that.
I'm not supporting that and you're, would want an exemption for medical marijuana. So, on that, I'm assuming the subcommittee wants that in. So, on that, we're, uh, two, four, and three against. Is that correct?
No.
Yeah, three, two, I guess, yeah.
Okay.
Madam Mayor, if I may, um, to clarify, it, it sounds to me that the objection on this piece is to the, um, lack of exemption for medical marijuana in the individual unit. Um, the ordinance applies, um, outside of that narrow exemption. The, is there, I guess I'm asking, is there an objection, um, to the application of the ordinance to marijuana generally? It sounds to me that the hang-up is the lack of exemption for medical marijuana in an individual unit. Um, and I, I think if we could just clarify that point, it would help staff understand where we're, where we're going on this.
I'm not quite sure I understood how you worded that, so.
The definition of smoking includes smoking of marijuana or the vaping of marijuana, so.
I would not want the smoking to include medical marijuana.
Okay.
In public places?
Or just in individual units? The county, the county allows it, the exemption that the county has allows it in an individual unit in a multi-unit residence.
Yeah, to clarify, three of us want to reflect what the county's doing and the subcommittee wants to.
Just multi-unit housing.
I understand, okay.
I don't think we're talking, because I don't think, I mean, the ordinance doesn't, you're, you're saying it addresses marijuana in public places?
So the, the, the ordinance bans smoking and that smoking of traditional, as drafted, and traditional cigarettes, e-cigarettes and other substances, including marijuana everywhere. The county has an exemption to that and that exemption would be to allow medicinal marijuana in an individual unit of an M, M U R. And what I'm understanding from council is that three members of council want to go with that model that the county has.
Right, well, state law doesn't permit it anyway currently, so it doesn't really matter what we.
I'm assuming that none of us want people standing outside smoking medical marijuana or any marijuana on the street corner.
Of course not.
Uh, so, does that give you direction?
Yes.
And then item six, which applies to the vaporizing of marijuana and does not contain an exemption for the vaporizing of medical marijuana. And I think that we, again, have a three.
Yeah, we just make it consistent with, uh, number six, I mean, number five.
Okay, I'm just trying to go down the list.
Does the county, county allow the vaping of medical marijuana? Is there an exemption there?
The exemption is the same as for smoking, so they allow it vaping and smoking of medical marijuana in an individual unit and in a multi-unit residence.
And, um, just to, um, mention, the staff report did include that third option about medical marijuana that allowed it with, you know, a note from a doctor saying this was the only way to effectively administer it for medical reasons.
I think that's very highly restrictive and I would not go for that only, as the only exemption.
Okay.
Personally.
Yeah.
I don't know how the rest of the council feels.
Just want to make sure we considered that option.
So then number seven is to impose limited restrictions on the distribution and sale of tobacco products, including e-cigarettes. I have no problem with requiring someone who's selling e-cigarettes or vaping devices to follow all the same regulations that a tobacco retailer has. Does anyone else?
That's what that means, that's what I.
If that's what that means.
So I think that, um, what you just described is actually number eight. And number eight requires tobacco retailers to come get, uh, a permit, a license to sell. And number eight would impose that same requirement on retailers of e-cigarettes. And number eight would impose that same requirement on retailers of e-cigarettes. Number seven is a little bit different. Number seven imposes some limited restrictions on the sale and distribution of tobacco products, including e-cigarettes, but also traditional tobacco products. And those restrictions would be new restrictions. You can't sell them from self-service displays, from vending machines. No free samples, no coupons for free samples. There are some limited restrictions. And so currently, Brisbane doesn't have any restrictions on that type of thing for any tobacco products. This would impose those restrictions on both traditional tobacco products and e-cigarettes.
I have no problem with those restrictions on any of those items.
And does that mirror the county's ordinance?
It's exactly the same.
Okay.
So, yes on seven and eight. To clarify, yes on seven and eight.
Right. So, I think seven and eight were both, were all on board with it.
Yeah.
And the, so, from what I understand, from what Clark is saying, is he would like to table three and four out of the ordinance? And come back in six months when we've had a chance to do some outreach and work out some of the kinks? And revisit it at that point.
To truly do education. Educate them beforehand, before we do the ordinance.
Right.
You know, and I'm talking about the multi-resident owners and also the owners of both multi-residences up at the northeast ridge.
So, so we could, could we put in? I don't think we'd really need to put in our ordinance the intent to do outreach before extending the scope of this ordinance. But I think that's the council's, at least Clark's intent, to shelve those two items until the outreach has been done. And at that point, it may have a shorter implementation time, but we wouldn't be making that commitment at this point.
Right.
Is that correct?
That's what my suggestion is.
And I, I don't want to leave out people who have written letters. And traditionally, we have gotten quite a few letters, both for and against the smoking ordinance. Certainly, watching on social media. We've had a lot more pushback than support, or at least that's what I've seen. That's not scientific. So, I do think that people who are making comments on social media should reach out in the traditional methods through the city website and through us to really let us know how this, they feel about this.
Maybe we could put this on Brisbane Town Hall.
Perhaps we could put it on Brisbane Town Hall. But I think it's, it's important that this has been a very, very contentious issue. And it shows that it is.
People have been very passionate about it on both sides, you know, and, you know, but the, I, I think the common agreement is there is everybody agrees that cigarettes and cigarette smoke and secondary smoke is harmful, you know, I mean.
And annoying.
Where the debate, I think, has been more is through the vaping and the medical marijuana.
So, if it's the vaping and the medical marijuana, I still don't understand the concern about number three, about smoking in multi-unit residents. I think, you know, one of the major reasons why we're looking at that, or the reason, is because of a complaint by one of our residents. And I think it's a mistake not to move forward with the smoking in multi-unit residents. And to separate, you know, if we need to separate out the e-cigarettes, do that. But, you know, we have an obligation, I think, to, to move forward to protect the children and, you know, the people who choose not to smoke in multi-unit residences.
Well, I, I understand your concern and that the protection ordinance, but it isn't. I mean, I'm not willing to do that on, certainly on owned units at this point, where people have purchased their units with, with the intention that this isn't a role for them. And so, I'm not.
Can I ask the county representative if she could come up and just talk about whether there are any other cities in the county that have had opt-outs for entire buildings?
Do we have the list?
No, from a practical standpoint, no city has chosen to approach it that way. When you look at the discussion that has been had at multiple cities, you know, it has taken them some time, but they've all come to the same conclusion. So, the county vetted this for three years, Foster City did it for eighteen months, and they all came to the same conclusion to include any building where people shared floors, ceilings, walls, or ventilation systems. Because it's about the design of the building more so than the ownership, because the primary owner may not reside there. That could be a rental unit, even though someone else owns it. So, they, they've all had these discussions and they've heard back from HOAs in this regard and how they might deal with that. And each of the cities has come to the conclusion that this was the best way to approach it. And while I'm standing here, Councilman Conway, just to give you more information about the education we do, we don't wait until there's a complaint. There is education that happens leading up to the implementation of an ordinance. So, in Daly City, we sent out mailers to thirty-five hundred to seven thousand of those units in Daly City twice before the ordinance went into effect. We took out ads in the newspapers to notify residents and we had coalition members on the ground to provide education. Once the policy went into effect, we found that some people still didn't know. Myself and Francesca were both in Daly City, firing a specific building where we had received complaints. So, our intent is always that we give people enough education and time to make an adjustment before they even call the police. Because, again, we think with sufficient time and education, people will adjust their behaviors.
I think what I heard from Councilmember Conway was that he would like that kind of outreach before we implement it.
Right, but she was just clarifying, because I stated that, what do you, wait for somebody to complain about it? And then you do the education and she's clarifying that.
Yeah, so.
And I appreciate that.
Because we, we definitely want to be at a point where when it's fully implemented and the police can actually cite people, that everyone is already adjusted, that they don't actually have to do that. And that's one of the reasons why cities change, choose six months to twelve months for this process to happen. So, in Burlingame, it was six months, in the county, it was fourteen, fourteen months, Daly City, fourteen months.
I, I, I think that, and I agree with you, that the education should start before we pass the law.
Right.
Okay, well.
In this case, we're small enough to be able to do that, I think, you know, so.
I think if we go with that route, though, then we have to be in agreement on what the ordinance is before it goes to the public for education, because at that point, we don't want to be making changes to it. So, I think we need clarity and direction from, from all of the council on those two issues at this point.
Absolutely, I know, I agree with that. You know, we shouldn't do an education thing and then, and then we're changing.
Well, we may need to change it if that's not what our public wants.
Well, you know, again, I'm giving you my position is that smoking in multi-unit buildings, you cannot control where that smoke is going to go. And so, if someone is smoking and there's, and it's in a building where there's non-smokers in it that don't want to be affected, they're going to be affected. And they shouldn't be put in that position. And so, you know, I support this ordinance. I'm hearing what Councilmember Conway is saying, that he'd rather have the, the education upfront. But then, once that education part is done, he would support this ordinance as, you know, as we're trying to modify it.
Right. That's what I said.
So, you know, as we knock it out now, then, you know, then we will bring this back to the council and, and then adopt these, you know, then finalize adopting the ordinance that we've modified, hopefully, tonight.
And I, and I think, I think we're, I think we're there, you know, because we wanted to reflect what the county's doing in regards to medical marijuana. And I think the vaping, at least the majority of us are there, saying, okay, you know, vaping is probably along the same lines as cigarettes, talking about the e-cigarettes and tobacco. So, you know, it's banning in, in common areas, but exactly what's that mean? Because, you know, what it's, the exemptions, I think, in here for like certain garages, well, how does that apply up to the northeast ridge, too? You know what I mean? How would that apply up there? Because they have basically one very large enclosed garage in a lot of places where some places are carports that are covered, you know, so it's, it's. So those need to be defined and, you know what I mean, worked out as what they are.
We sort of did at the subcommittee level, so.
During this last rendition.
So, was, was that, you know, like, say, one part where the condos, where they have the garages underneath? Could they smoke there if there were smokers?
No.
Not underneath, but.
So, the underneath part where I went, and perhaps Councilmember Lou can help me remember the name of the, the place.
Altamar.
Altamar. So, I went, actually went to Altamar specifically because the committee really wanted to be able to draft around this problem. And the, at Altamar, the, there's an essentially a garage, an enclosed garage structure. And so, smoking underneath that closed garage structure would be precluded because it's an enclosed structure on the multi-unit resident. However, on top of that, there is sort of a parking area on top that is not covered and not enclosed at all. So, as long as, unless the landlord, let me back up a second. The landlord would be able to, or the HOA in that case, would be able to designate a smoking area on the top of that garage, as long as that area is at least thirty feet from doors, windows, or ventilation systems of any enclosed areas. So, it would have to be that distance from not only where the residents live, but the ventilation systems in, in the garage itself. But it appeared that that would, that would be allowable. And some of those carport areas, which are on top and covered, but are not otherwise enclosed, would be able to be designated as long as they meet that thirty-foot distance requirement. So, so the subcommittee actually worked hard in order to find a place in that garage space that would be, could be a designated smoking area if the HOA chose to make it one.
Okay, then, thank you for that. So, that could be part of the clarification or outreach and.
Okay, so why can't we pass something tonight and then just have a longer outreach and more extensive outreach process?
Because I want to make sure it really happens, because I've seen the stuff just fall through the cracks and nothing happens and say, oh, yeah, we did, we sent a letter. I really want foot on the pavement and a truly outreach, because, you know, apparently what we did before was not effective enough, in my eyes. So, I really want to see that outreach happen, just like when Ray was mayor, he used to go up there to the HOA meetings and you'd get people in attendance there on things. So, when you got city council members attending HOA meetings, people have a tendency to show up sometimes, so.
Yeah, good, Madam Mayor.
Of course.
So, I, I'm kind of hearing a direction here. You know, it's pretty obvious that in terms of my personal preference, I would like to see us go ahead because I care about what's happening in the meantime to the people who are being exposed to these toxic fumes that are having health consequences as consequence of, of the secondhand smoke that they're, you know, forced to breathe. So, it's pretty clear where my position is and I would be, you know, obviously in favor of passing this ordinance or introducing it tonight and letting it go from there. On the other hand, I'm, I'm not known for pushing things to a conclusion if there's a lot of contention and if people have questions. In fact, I was thinking, sitting here, that one of the reasons that I avoided being recalled in nineteen eighty-nine was that I was the one member of the council who said, now, wait a minute, before we make a decision on something which is really major, we should take some time and explain it well and make sure everybody is comfortable with what we're doing and why we're doing it. And so, I have a history of approaching it that way. So, if I were consistent with that particular approach, which I think I am, what I'm hearing is that the, the council, actually, all of the council members would, and I hope I'm right about this, would be comfortable with introducing, if this is legally possible, items one, two, seven, and eight this evening. But then leaving the, essentially the multi-unit residential part alone for the time being. But I think in order to make sure that what Clark is talking about happens, and obviously I agree with those kind of outreaches and talking to a lot of people and you're never going to get everybody to agree, but at least you've made your effort and you explained everything and, and you can really demonstrate, you know, what the studies are. And some of the people this evening who spoke, you know, said things that are just not founded in scientific evidence and some of them are, and so, we need to sort all that out and just show people, okay, these are the studies, this is what it says, you know. Obviously, there are people who don't believe that, or they read something on the internet that disagrees with that and you can find anything on the internet. But, you know, there's just a lot of scientific evidence, but a lot of people just don't believe it yet. And you're never going to get everybody to come along, but at least we should make the effort to educate as many people as we can and bring as many people as possible into the loop so that, you know, when we do pass an ordinance, and I hope you all will, that people can say, okay, this was really fully vetted and we understand what they're doing it. And some people say, great, glad you did it, and other people say, well, still don't agree, but you certainly gave us a lot of chance to have a say. And so, my hope is that we can introduce one, two, seven, and eight this evening, if that's feasible. I'm going to ask the city attorney. But then I think we need to pass a separate motion that puts specifically what you're talking about, Clark. So that the council is committed to this education program and we're, you know, going to be bringing to them this model or, or sample ordinance that we have in mind and, you know, for controlling smoking in multi-unit residences. And these are all the provisions, but they're not, you know, solid at this point because we're out there to get your feedback and to find out what people have to say about it, you know, what would be, you know, designated smoking areas, you know, what could work in various kinds of places. And, you know, we worked very hard on Altamar and we, we did a field trip and everything. And we really, I think, have got that situation in mind and I think there are solutions there. But we didn't go to every apartment building in town or every condo complex in town, you know, and, and there certainly are a number. And if there's a feeling that, you know, we would get a better public understanding of what we're about and what the whole point is, then, then I think it would be a good process.
And, and Ray, if we were to come back with something on items three and four? And with an outreach plan and a revisitation plan of, you know, this is the goal to make everybody safe or make as many people as safe as we can.
Right.
And what if with our outreach, we came back where the citizens of, whether it's Altamar or the citizens in general, are really against it? How would we be able to do what our citizens want if we were to put this in some sort of hard form?
I'm not, I'm not quite sure I understand what you're asking, but, but my understanding is that if we were to make a motion, and I, the key is that we're committing to a. and I, the key is that we're committing to an educational outreach program to say that we're considering this kind of regulation of smoking and with the definition that we've agreed to in multi-unit residences. And this is kind of how we expect it would work. And then we, you know, do the education and do the contacts, listen to people. How you get a sense of, you know, where the public is at on this is an interesting question because, you know, people were talking about, well, seems to be a lot of pushback on social media. But on the other hand, whenever you give surveys and you ask people, should smoking be regulated? So other people are not poisoned, especially their kids, you know, seventy, eighty percent say, yeah, we should do that. So if you take polls, you, you get a very different kind of response than if you get, you know, a social media venue and then that, that's kind of a different.
Oh, social media, yes. Social media is very different.
Yeah. So, I mean, that's why I'm not sure, you know, what, what you're asking about. Because I think you need to give a lot of care and a lot of concern for how you respond to that. But the, the, the bottom line that I would have in terms of my own personal position, and, and this is something that I've said before. Of course, most things, except for, you know, basic human rights are, are, you know, open to referendum, so to speak. But there are certain kinds of things that, that are just so important morally that you just can't say, oh, whatever anybody wants to do is okay. I always remember, remember Representative Congressman Burton. And he was being interviewed and he said, yes, I listen to the people. And he said, but there are certain limits. He said, you know, if the people voted to go to nuclear war, I'd still vote no. I mean, there are certain moral obligations that you have as a representative of the people to say, wait a minute. There are certain kinds of things that are really so fundamental to the health and welfare and the basic rights of people that you have to take a stand. Not everything is subject to the vote. And that's kind of a misunderstanding of democracy when everybody thinks, well, voting is democracy. No, there are a lot of fundamental, basic things that need to be protected and you can't just vote them away. And even though there would be occasions when people would vote them away, you just can't allow that or you lose the basic fundamentals of democracy. Because there are a lot of occasions when you'd ask people, you know, what do you think of the Bill of Rights? There was periods doing, you know, the anti-Russian, anti-Soviet hysteria. Eighty percent of the people said, yeah, do away with the Bill of Rights. You, you, you have to, you know, take certain moral stance at some point and say, wait a minute. This is just so fundamental that, that you have to stand up and recognize that this is what's in the moral interest of the public. So I, I just wanted to express that personal view as how we deal with this. And it, it's not just a matter of, you know, flip it up in the air and, you know, and see what happens. I, I think there's some more fundamental things that we have to keep in mind. So anyway, I would, I would like to hope if the city attorney is receptive that we can introduce one, two, seven, and eight and then pass that other motion that I was referring to, if that's legally possible.
Yes, Councilmember Miller, it is. You could pass the ordinance as it's written with the amendment to take out eight point four six. If you take out eight point four six, it takes out all of the multi-unit resident provisions. And you're left with the smoking in public places as well as the tobacco retailer provisions.
We kind of have to address the medical marijuana issue in there.
The medical marijuana piece is in eight point four six. So if you're not dealing with the multi-unit resident, then you don't need to deal with the exemption that applies only to the multi-unit resident.
Right.
And what would happen to the, the whereas clauses that refer to secondhand smoke and vaping issues? Those are in the beginning.
We can, we can take out whatever whereas clauses that you want. Some of those would apply to public places as well, but some are specific to multi-unit resident. And I can.
It seems that if we're going to take out the ordinance provisions regulating smoking in multi-unit housing, that we don't need the whereas clauses that refer only to that. But of course, we want to hold on to those.
That's right.
Thoughts, we don't want to lose that.
No, no, because we're going to come back to it. And I, I think, well, I think there's three council members who would, are comfortable with moving forward after the outreach has been completed. So, of course, I can't speak on behalf of new council member Davis because you will no longer be on the council, Mr. Miller. But, yeah, I think.
So, okay, can I clarify then? So i- if we go forward with the outreach and, you know, we get more public input, are you saying that, I just, I just want to make sure I understand that you'll, that, that at least the, you know, Clark and Cliff would be comfortable with approving this once we go through this outreach?
I'm seeing doing, yeah, the outreach from an educational standpoint is not necessarily, I mean, you'll get feedback anyway, but it's not, it's, it's truly to be educational, not saying.
Not to change the ordinance.
Yeah, do you support it or not? You know, it's like, this is, this is a direction that, that we're looking at going, you know, and want to have the opportunity to educate you on why, why we're doing this, you know? And that's basically, you know, what the outreach would be. It wouldn't be beforehand, it would be, well, it'd be beforehand, but not after we pass it, so.
Okay.
Yeah, and that's.
Before passage. I mean, for, for me, the evidence is overwhelming.
Okay.
And, and it's pretty clear, I mean, during this education outreach, there could be more members of the public who would be against it. Again, the, the evidence is the evidence and that's what I'm stating my opinion on.
Well, I gotta tell you, I was like with you, Cliff, I, you know, I didn't really, I wasn't convinced on the vaping, but I, I became convinced tonight, you know?
Yes.
And that's really what the education is, is, you know, that, you know. So, you know, the medical marijuana part, I'm not yet, but, you know, the, the vaping part, yeah, I was convinced tonight, so.
So, so before we, we, we move away from, you know, in passing eight point four five, so on item number one, it talks about the, you know, the certain public places. So I, on page thirteen, paragraph C, D, and F, I have proposed some changes. And so I'd like for us to talk about that. And, you know, do we take out by, upper bicentennial walkway, lower bicentennial walkway, Mono and Klamath Walkway, Old Corey Road Park, Crocker Park Trail, and Marina on the Bay Trail from being prohibited from, from smoking? And so, I mean.
So it's making it less restrictive and if, if that makes you comfortable, that's since.
Yes, I mean, it's up for discussion.
Okay.
Yeah. I'd like to just point out that one of the reasons that some of the walkways that you just mentioned are included is because a lot of kids go to school that way and they use them for school. And so, I mean, you could probably make an argument that, you know, that the banded rail in, in Crocker is not a route to school. And, and that may be, you know, something that we could, you know, take out of here. But I'm a little bit concerned about moving the walkways and the specific ways in which kids are likely to go to school. Because one of the purposes of this is to reduce the exposure to kids and that's why some of these walkways are included. So that, just want to let you know, that's why they're there.
That's a good point. And, you know, to exclude them just because they're not currently a problem is kind of almost inviting a problem. And I, I don't think that we should just look to where there is currently a smoking issue. You know, what, what we looked at was where are people, you know, walking and running and, you know, engaging in recreational uses? And so I, I don't, I don't see why we would narrow it.
It's just that, you know, you can smoke on the sidewalk, you can smoke on the street and these, these walkways connect those streets and, and.
But they're short. I mean, couldn't somebody wait until they got to the sidewalk? It's like walking down a flight of stairs, flight or two of stairs.
I would leave the walkways in.
You're really going to be puffing while going up or down a walkway?
I, I think you could leave those in the ordinance, but.
And Corey Park, yeah, that, a lot of people use that to, to walk their strollers. I did when I, when my kids were little and walked dogs and just, you know, to get to school. And Crocker Park Trail is used hopefully by employees who want to get out on a lunch break or anybody who wants to try to use a bike on it. Or, you know.
Try, try the operative.
I've tried. So, and, and the Marina, we included that because we, we did not include the, the boats and the, you know, the decks to get out to the boats, the docks. So the point was to have a place at the Marina along the Bay Trail where people could go for a run or a walk and know that they had a smoke-free environment.
Okay, you're looking for a walking, smoke-free environment.
But there are other places out at the Marina where smoking is permitted, such as on the docks or in the parking lots.
It makes me laugh about, on page four, it says, the third bullet point says, the United States Fire Administration recommends that people smoke outdoors. Do we kind of want to reword that?
Okay.
Like.
And, and item D exempts smoking restrictions from the parking lot. That's the last part of that. And as for the public transit stops, I, I think what you're saying is actually the same thing, you know, within public strand, transit structures.
I think that needs to be clarified. That was what, that was intended. Shelters is what we were talking about, yeah. So I think we can just.
That's just a language.
Make it more clear.
All right, so, you know, you presented a good argument for the, the trails and having a walk-free environment. So, but item D, the, the parking areas. So why, why is any city-owned parking, public parking area such an important thing not to, not to be able to smoke?
Trying to remember, was that in the county ordinance?
This provision applies only to parking areas that are associated with the beach parks, trails, and sports fields that are listed in subsection C. So that, you can't, you can't smoke in those parking areas. But other city parking areas, you could smoke unless it's an enclosure.
Or thirty feet from the building.
That's correct.
Well, you know, I mean, I doubt.
Unless there's a sidewalk.
So if you're at the tennis courts, you can't smoke in the parking lot? Or if you're in front of the top lot? What was that?
What, this did come from the county. We, we reworded it and reshuffled it because the county didn't, the county was not allowing smoking at any beaches, parks, or trails within the unincorporated areas. And based on the comments of council at one of the earlier meetings, the committee decided to list specific beaches, parks, and trails. And so, but the, the concept is the same from the county. The county was not allowing smoking in the parking areas associated with the beach, beaches, parks, and trails where smoking wasn't permitted.
All right, I mean, these are things that, that wouldn't keep me from voting. You know, I'm just, again, I just want to get your reaction and also the other council members. You know, one of the things that we've heard from folks is that, that, you know, we're trying to go too much, right? And so, but you need to thoroughly vet it out in, in order to, you know, explain yourself.
I agree with that.
So I guess we're okay then leaving these items as areas that are prohibited?
Did, just going back to page four, I know I said that, it sounded flippant, but do we want to readjust that language a little bit?
On which page?
Page four, bullet point three. It says, the United States Fire Administration recommends that people smoke outdoors. And maybe say something like, the United States Fire Administration recommends that for people who smoke should smoke outdoors or something like that, or?
How about recommends that if people smoke, they smoke outdoors?
Yeah.
Sure.
That acceptable? I mean, it just, it just sounds funny.
There are some whereas clauses that are associated with the multi-unit residence. If you want, I can identify them if it's council's preference to pull those out.
Should we take them out? I, I was looking at that, but, you know, if, if we're doing the outreach to do the education, that really probably should stay in there in a sense. Because if we're going to look at doing the other part of the ordinance later on, once that education process is done, then, you know, we'd have to go back and amend that part, put them back in. Well, I don't know, I guess.
Well, the, this, the whereas clauses get passed in the ordinance, but they don't get codified in the code. What's in the code will just be the operative provisions of the ordinance that you pass. So it's entirely up to council. It seems to be reasonable to leave them in. If you want to leave them in, we could also remove them if you're more comfortable having them removed.
I'm fine leaving them in. It makes it stronger, but.
It's not, it's not a directive in any way or another, it's just a whereas.
Right.
Yes.
Right.
The ordinance is the ordinance.
Right.
But they'll just be repeated in the ordinance passed in the future about when we get to that point.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay, so can we then introduce that part of the ordinance that is encompassed by points one, two, seven, and eight on page two? Keeping the, you know, all the whereas clauses?
So I think the motion, if, if that's what you want to do, would be to introduce the ordinance that's in front of you, making the amendment that Councilmember Conway suggested in the one whereas clauses about the Fire Administration.
Right.
Making the change from transit stops to the transit structures.
Or shelters.
Pardon?
Shelters.
Shelters. Okay. And then removing eight, the entire chapter eight point four six, which would take out the ban on smoking in multi-unit residences.
Is that a motion?
It is.
I'll second that.
And then all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Then we need the motion to follow up on, on Clark's question. I think you would like to do that, right? Or do you want me to?
Articulate it.
Okay, so then we need to move that it is the council's intent to implement a control of smoking ordinance in multi-unit residences within the next year, two thousand seventeen.
Sixteen.
Sixteen.
But before that happens, there will be an extensive education outreach on the nature of the ordinance and the justification for it and receiving full opportunity for feedback from all appropriate homeowners associations and landlords.
That covers it.
I got it?
Yeah.
And then do we want to refer that to the subcommittee to define what that outreach is? Or how, how do we intend to define what that is?
I think the county.
Or maybe we should discuss that now.
You're going to be the ones doing it, so.
I think that's.
Okay, is there any input from the council on what that should be?
Well, I think that, you know, what I said initially is that we should have at least two comprehensive meetings with each homeowner association. least two comprehensive meetings with each homeowner association, you know, with all the noticing and stuff like that, and who's going to be in attendance, and, you know, what the purpose of it is. And also with the apartment owners, you know, that one's, that one's going to be a little bit tougher, but, you know, you're going to be dealing with a lot of individual owners.
Right. That's why I said landlords and...
Not to interrupt, but when the county said that after the Daly City approved their ordinance, they went out and actually notified, papered, and went to all the residences to notify them.
At a general mailing.
So I think that that kind of outreach, where it's really a blanket approach...
Is a good idea.
...is something that, you know, we have a much smaller area and smaller demographics to be able to do that outreach.
But you could be able to set up a meeting with them also.
No, no, I agree, but I think that it also needs to include, you know, one-on-one outreach via mail.
Maybe we can come back in another meeting and have the subcommittee, I know, Ray, you're not going to be on it, but have the subcommittee, you know, with the input from the county and come up with some suggestions in addition to that.
I mean, maybe we just knock it out right now.
Huh?
Maybe have, come up and just, yeah, because we need to move forward with this.
Agreed.
Did you second the motion, Clark?
I...
I do.
You did, okay.
What is it you...
So we need some guidance in the outreach. So what can you provide, Ashandra, that helps the subcommittee?
So I have contractors who do onsite educational sessions for the apartment and the HOAs. It's just a matter of me indicating how many of those they should do. So I have contractors who do that as part of their agreement with me already. So if we need to go to one city, we do it there. If we need to be in another city, we do it there. So that's already built in to work that we do. So some cities need more, some cities need less.
Right.
And would the county be willing to provide that assistance in this pre-ordinance...
Absolutely, yes.
Process?
And this motion will be sufficient to kick start?
Well, you know, it's, the city council doesn't necessarily legislate what we do at the Health Department, but this is something that we would be willing to do because we feel that it's, it's critical to the implementation of something we support.
Okay.
So we would be willing to do that.
Okay.
Ashandra, would you be willing to host a meeting at these two HOAs?
Yes.
Okay, good. That would suffice.
The two HOAs? You mean the three at the ridge you're talking about?
The condo complexes.
Oh, you're right, two. There's two.
Yeah. Yeah, so the two condo complexes at the ridge.
There's three total, about one.
Yeah, I want to do at least two meetings up there, two meetings.
So we can, we can develop...
One in one and one in the other?
No.
Two in each.
Two, okay, so is that acceptable?
So we can develop a communication plan that would work in conjunction with the city. So we have X number of staff and X number of contractors, and so we'd need to know what the city's expectation is, because we could establish educational meetings, but if no one shows up, we've met our end of that agreement. If nobody showed up, you know, we're, we can't be held to that.
Well, you know, I think what you've demonstrated by doing that blanket approach first and then conducting the meetings, and if people don't show up, they don't show up.
Yeah, yeah.
But Mr., you know, Tony's going to be, you know, helping.
He'll be there, yeah.
So, yeah, we'll have folks that will come to those meetings.
Yeah, and Daly City should take quite a bit of time, because, you know, there's 110,000 people in Daly City and 7,000 units. But half of those units were owned by a single property management company.
Right.
So some of that outreach went directly to that one property manager.
It used to be Westlake Properties, I don't know what it is now.
So, Shauna, what kind of outreach would you recommend, or would you do with the smaller units?
We could do more one-on-one interactions with that, because we do have a group of contractors who are better at that approach.
Right.
So we don't have any objections to assisting the city in any way that's needed to get this education out.
So I think that the subcommittee, whoever that's going to be, should maybe in our, in our direction, say that we want to work on a communication outreach program and not really go into the specifics, you know, mail it on this day and meet with these people that day. I think it needs to be a little more fluid, given the lateness of the hour. I don't think we're going to come up with a...
We're ready to assist in it in any...
Yeah, I think we got a good plan in place, and then just getting an update, saying, this is what we've done, and, you know, and you don't even need to be here, the subcommittee could just report, the city manager can report.
Could I just point out that we also received a letter from Supervisor Carol Room?
I was aware of that, yes.
Who, you know, as you saw, strongly supports this county program and offered all their assistance, and so we have it right from the Board of Supervisors, so.
That's right.
Just wanted to put that on the record.
Yes, yes. Thank you.
So, and we appreciate it a lot, at least I do, because...
Absolutely.
A lot of the evidence that's been compiled has been very persuasive, as some of my colleagues have said.
And these types of efforts are ongoing throughout the entire state, so there's an equivalent to me in every county. So we all take this very seriously, and we want to provide as much assistance to the cities as we can.
I appreciate that.
Yes.
Thank you, Shauna, for your patience, you and your colleague sitting through these long meetings.
Okay, so we started to ramble on about what the second motion would be.
We already, he made a motion and...
I made the motion, and Clark seconded it, and I think Theresa took it down. Are you comfortable? You want to go over it?
Do we have a timeframe that we want to set for this outreach?
Yeah, is over, I'm going to put it on the agenda, so.
Okay. I think, I think Ray had mentioned that he'd like to see, a desire to see an ordinance by the end of next year, 2016.
By the end of this coming year, yeah.
That was a part of the motion.
I'm sure that will happen.
Okay.
Okay, so we had a motion and a second, and all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Okay, we don't have all communications too, so we'll close in...
Almost ready.
In memory of Jane Kinsler.
Kinsler.
And for the victims of the San Bernardino shooting.
Thank you.
San Bernardino massacre, yeah.
And I just want to say, you know, for the record, I'm glad we did pass something tonight. I think it's important that we get our laws up to date on smoking in public places, and I'm hopeful that, you know, we'll be able to, through community outreach, that we will hopefully get something on the books to protect the people in multi-unit residences from smoking and vaping harms, because the, you know, what we've heard from the experts, it's pretty serious, and I think, you know, given that e-cigarettes are unregulated and all the marketing issues and the increase of usage among youth, you know, I think, I'm glad that we're moving in that direction.
Yes.
Thank you, guys, for all your hard work.
Yes, thank you.